Board of Community Preferences for 2019 and 2020 after our reorganization next month. And then that will be returned. So, okay, first action item is recommendation to approve the minutes of the March 13th, 2019 regular board meeting. So, motion is second. Any question on those minutes? Hearing not all in favor state aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next action item is resolution to approve the bill list, which is included in your back end. Will we approve the bill list? The motion is second. Any question on the bill list? Hearing not all in favor state aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Next item is communications and comments from the public.
No one signed up.
Nobody signed up. Moving on, superintendent's report.
My superintendent's report is a real treat for all of you. We have Mr. Steve Melzer here, who is a business education teacher and the advisor for our DECA program. All of you have heard about DECA already. I know that because I'm singing their praises all the time in some of my memos. But we've got several DECA members here and they'd like to help the board understand and also we can all celebrate their success at both the state and international DECA competitions. We'll hear from them how well they did and then anything else they'd like to share about the DECA program. So, Mr. Melzer, if you want to kick it off.
I'm Abby Thicke and I am the current president of Arrowhead DECA and I'm senior.
I'm Jonathan Witter. I'm just general leadership team and I'm also senior.
I'm Dela Garing. I'm a senior and I am vice president of Specialized.
I'm Andrew Thicke. I'm the president-elect and I'm a sophomore.
I'm McKenna Melzer and I'm on the leadership team and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Grace and I'm on the leadership team and I'm also a sophomore.
I'm Emma Hoffman and I'm a senior and I'm the vice president of Public Relations and Community Service. Okay, so today we are here to talk to you a little bit about what DECA is, why we do DECA, some general career and competition development as well as the community service we participate in, leadership development, and some new updates for 2019 and 2020.
DECA as a whole is an association of marketing students here at Arrowhead. In order to be in DECA, you can be any of the grades here and you must be enrolled in one of our marketing classes, which is the Marketing Business, Sports Entertainment, Marketing, Sales and Promotion, Entrepreneurship Venture, or if you're a freshman, you can be in DECA without your classes. Also, there are 215,000 members worldwide with 3,500 chapters and over 80 countries represented.
Why choose Arrowhead DECA? In Arrowhead DECA, we have a fun and positive time and we do lots of community service and we do lots of networking and we like to build a network with business partners and other marketing students around the world. It also looks great on college resumes and college applications. And we also do attend DECA conferences and different DECA things around the state and around here.
So, there are four main events that we do as Arrowhead DECA. These include Hawks Fest, Marketing Nights, District Competition, and State Competition. So, the first thing that we want to talk to you guys tonight is Hawks Fest. Have any of you guys ever heard of Hawks Fest before or even attended, I would assume? So, this year, our theme was blast from the past. You can even see some of the pictures of the shirts that we created and DECA students designed those ourselves and we partnered with Mid-City to print them. Over the summer, we started going out and getting sponsors from local businesses and organizations around Heartland. We actually gained 155 sponsors this year, so that was one of our best years yet. After the event, we were able to total up what we made and we donated $8,000 to Make-A-Wish to Grant Isabelle's Wish, who actually was able to come and attend Hawks Fest this year, which is really exciting to have her represented at our event. We also donated $2,000 to Haws. In the past couple of years, we've partnered with Haws and they come and they bring their animals to Hawks Fest as well. So, this is really a fun event and a good time for them, too. This year, we had 26 rides and attractions. You can see a picture of some of the kids enjoying them. And we had different clubs, businesses, and other organizations throughout the grounds that people could walk through, play games, and whatnot, just to look at all what the clubs and businesses have to offer. And finally, we had five different food vendors for consumers to come through and browse and eat food and overall just have a great time. So, then throughout the rest of the year, we also put on a few marketing nights, which you may or may not have attended as well. So, marketing nights are a really excellent opportunity for our DECA members and marketing students to work on promoting a fun school event while also giving back to the community around them. So, we had three marketing nights this week: boys' basketball, girls' basketball, and boys' hockey. So, at our boys' basketball game, the theme was Wild West. We gave out some fun DECA cowboy hats at the door and we raised over $300 for Make-A-Wish through our miracle minute at halftime alone. We also had a lot of different food vendors and entertainment options that we provided at the game. Then at our girls' basketball game, the theme was pajama party. We made some t-shirts and we collected stuffed animals for Haws. That was a really awesome event. We had everyone bring in stuffed animals, throw them all out on half court at halftime. Super fun. And in that miracle minute, we raised over $250 for MDA. Then for our final marketing night, we participated with boys' hockey and we had Operation DECA, which was a spy-themed marketing night. That was something really unique this year. And then we also raised some funds through our Chocopuck Chick-fil-A sales and Krispy Kreme sales that we give back to charity.
So, then the career exploration and competition that we partake in goes with district, state, and international competitions. For districts, we had over 60 students attend, gaining 62 awards, and 37 of them qualified for state. Of those 37, 22 were top four finishers, which means they got DECA class. At state, we had 28 qualify for ICDC. We had 12 top twos and eight chapter awards, so that includes a whole chapter where we kind of all like worked together for it. And then nationals or internationals, we have 27 students attending for 17 different events. And at ICDC, we have our projects, our tests, and presentations, where the scores from all those go into one and that factors into how well you do overall.
So, just some examples of some of the events that we are all in. I'm in buying and merchandising operations research event and I partnered, actually did it with my younger brother, who's not here tonight, but we qualified for internationals and we partnered with Milwaukee Tool Corporation for that and wrote a business plan about a new marketing campaign for the company.
I did the creative marketing project with my friend Ashley Knicker and we partnered with the Corners of Brookfield and helped them try to increase the traffic flow at the Corners of Brookfield.
So, I participated in business services role play, which is a little bit different. So, I also did a project, but I ended up qualifying for my role play, which just entails doing two different situations. You're with a judge, you have 10 minutes to prepare, and you're given a hypothetical business situation for a type of business that depends on your event. So, since I was in business services, I see role plays about different service businesses, obviously. So, that might be plumbers, taxes, things along those lines. So, we do two role plays and a test for that event.
And then this year, I participated in the integrated marketing campaign service event for my project and I worked on creating a new marketing plan for Postmates, which is like a food delivery service, kind of similar to Uber Eats. And so, I worked with them to create a new marketing campaign for them. And then I also participated in the hotel and lodging series event, just like Emma was talking about, where there are the two role plays in the test. And at ICDC this year, I'm actually going to be doing my hotel and lodging management event. So, basically, like Emma said, we get 10 minutes to read over a situation. Mine's a little different than hers. I take a hospitality cluster test and then my event focuses mainly on improving the quality of hotels or marketing them to a different demographic.
I am going to ICDC for sports entertainment team decision-making and my partner's Natalie Perko, she's also senior, but she's not here today. What our event is, is also the test and two role plays. Our role play is normally, their content is a business situation where you may be rebranding a store, changing the hiring process, changing how they sell their customers, really any situation that betters the business and kind of revamps it in one way or another.
I do human resource management and it's also two role plays and a test. It covers everything from talent and resource distribution to payroll and anything else that has to do with how you manage.
So, this year, my state project, along with two other sophomores, was an integrated marketing campaign for the lumberjack championships up in Hayward. So, we, wow, yeah, kind of unique. So, we figured out what they were doing currently by communicating with the event coordinators and then making some changes to that and presenting those changes to a judge as well as taking a 100-question test about everything about marketing. And we took four in the state.
So, overall, like Jonathan mentioned, we actually did receive some different chapter awards this year for our entire chapter to recognize the things that we've done throughout the year in addition to just our competition at the state level. We received the acts of kindness award and the 100-plus community service hours award.
Our top contributions came from our trip to Pan, Polar Punch, as well as Hawks Fest and Marketing Nights. And our general contribution award was for Make-A-Wish and we were first place in the state for our donations.
Additionally, this year, we tried something a little new and for the first time in like 10 or 15 years, we wrote a 50-page paper to nationally certify our school store that's located up at North Campus. It's called the Hawks Nest. And so, we went through and detailed the different processes we have in the store, things that we sell, how we price everything, how we promote our products, and everything else that has to do with the school store. And we submitted that to National DECA and we were recognized as a gold chapter, which allowed us to take three additional students to ICDC this year so they can talk about that at the School Store Academy.
So, that is all that we have for you guys tonight. Do you guys have any questions at all just about what we do, about our competitions, or some of the events that we've put on?
What was Isabelle's wish?
It was to go on a Disney cruise over Christmas with her family.
Yeah, Isabelle, she's, obviously, she's seriously ill and unfortunately, she only has limited time. And so, with Make-A-Wish, she is local, so we tried to keep it local, so she's in the Arrowhead district, as well as her family came. It was really nice and so we're actually picking up another student for Make-A-Wish for Hawks Fest again this next year. So, that's really kind of nice, we kind of keep the money local. But if you were there, the parents and the child was in tears and it was nice to do that, so he's got hard work.
When you guys reach out and you work with these businesses, are they, two questions, are they receptive to the ideas that are brought forward for the different campaigns? And do they actually inform you?
Last year, I know that Del and I actually did a project with Imoca Cafe, which is right down the road, as you know. And something that was really, I think, encouraging for us to see this year was she actually took some of the ideas we presented last year, like being able to order ahead, decrease those wait times, and even having like a mobile application and a reward system and implemented this year. So, that was something really cool for us to see our ideas being put into like a real business place.
Yeah, the Corners of Brookfield, which McKenna and Ashley did too, you can see here, what they're going to present is one of the things they're gearing towards was how to get more younger kids there. The demographic there was the younger kids. So, they kind of tell them about what we did, what we actually did in terms of visiting some of the businesses.
Well, when I visited some of the businesses, I wanted to get some visuals for my project. And so, from each store, we went store to store and got stickers, as you can see, and this one here, we got different gift cards from all the stores. And then at state and at nationals, we present this and we show, we physically show them, we give the visuals out to the judge so they can see what the Corners of Brookfield has and what each store implements and gives us.
So, what's unique about that one is they're going to implement the ideas of how to get the younger kids there. And that is a market, you would think it would be, but the younger market, because they got to be careful with the high school market, because they want teenagers around, but they're really open to that idea. And as you know, in our demographics in the Brookfield area, there is money. And so, in the Corners of Brookfield, we've done a lot. So, then we'll be presenting, and some of these others, we'll be presenting some of the projects to the businesses, see if they catch on.
Are you Gen Z-er? Is that how you say it?
Yeah, Generation Z-er.
Yeah, mostly like teenagers.
Okay. We really have that.
Very clearly.
Wait, because I think I'm a Generation like something, but.
X removed.
That's what I'm.
So, I know we shared with you already where the money goes, you know, we do generate a lot of money. What we don't have up there is the money is going back to the students, organizations at Arrowhead, it goes basketball program, the hockey program. The money just circulates, you know, it's not something, we keep about half, let's say DECA keeps half in terms of helping our state, national expenses. We go into the summer, we go to Cambridge Mason every year, so we have a new chapter leadership team. We spend like two nights at the cabins there overnight and do the camping thing, the bond and plan out the year. So, our expenses go that way and of course, we do some other, you know, when people come and need some money and so forth, we do that as well. But we could just offer the community, if you've gone there, you'll see we have over 30-some organizations there in clubs at Arrowhead. And who's our event coordinator for next year? For Hawks Fest.
Well, I didn't know that.
So, Grace, you know our theme, right? What's our theme for next year?
We're doing a Halloween Hawks Fest, just to kind of separate it from homecoming. And it's going to be a little later, but we're excited.
It'll be fun. How many of you are seniors? Okay, are you going to do this in college if you're going there?
So, not every college offers it, but there are some collegiate DECA chapters available. I know I myself, it's not available at my school, but I'm fortunate enough to be pursuing business, so I'll definitely be using the skills that I learned in DECA now to get like interventions and others.
I've had the opportunity a couple times to be a judge at the district on the competitions. And, you know, the scenarios that they present you and the limited amount of time they have to prepare for it and what you guys come up with are just phenomenal. And it's really doing a nice job and it shows what you've done here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Do we have any other questions?
Oh, Mr. Melzer, in the past, you've bragged about how your wonderful DECA organization is done nationally. Do you have any boasting?
Well, yeah, well, we have 28 technically kids qualified, actually 29 did qualify. There are 27 going, unfortunately, at the same time as prom, so we lost a few because of prom. But this is the best we've ever done at Arrowhead. Just to let you know how hard it is to get to nationals and some of the events, sometimes there's 40 to 50 students and they'll take the top five in a lot of the projects and so forth. And this is at the state level, so the quality is definitely there. You can see the chapter awards, those are statewide, our nationally certified school store. But in terms of competition, is we got sophomores. We got the most sophomores that ever qualified and we got lucky, on the odds, I can't take too much credit for the freshmen. Tierney Ordway, I mean, Tierney Ordway made it and so, and Stiles.
Kyle Skous.
Kyle Skous, freshman. So, you just can see that the potential's there and the kids are there, too. But, and so, we're going to be going to Orlando in a few weeks. We hope to at least make people make, get some to the finals. No pressure on them or anything, but we've done very well at nationals recently, so we hope we can maintain that. But when they get to nationals, each judge sees about 16 to 20. They break it up and they only pick one to go to finals. And, oh, who made it to finals last year up here? So, that's cool to see. So, at the international level, we go up against Canada, Ontario, they're pretty tough, but it's fun, so it's a great experience, too.
I could just comment. It's a long time for you and you've been successful for a long time. My son's way old now, but he, and he went out to college and did it, it was, you know, he traveled and all of it because he got in all those and it started with you.
Well, thank you. I'm hard on them, too, they know, but for the most part, it's them that they do it.
It's okay.
But you have your days, you know, that is, you have your days, but.
If I could just comment, I think the, your achievement with competitions is very impressive. To me, even more impressive, and I hope you're proud of yourselves, because I'm really proud of you, I'm so impressed with your work, with your skills, the community service you do and how that matters not only to the community, but serving as a role model for younger kids to see that that's important. And also your confidence and presentation skills. You know, I would contend that all of those skills and learning that you've been doing are more important than winning awards, because they're life skills. They will help you in careers, they will help you as being really good, responsible adults and citizens. So, you know, congratulations for everything that you're doing and are becoming. It's impressive.
Thank you so much.
Can I ask a standing word, Secretary?
Well, thank you so much for listening to our presentation tonight and I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Thank you. Steve, can I? Yes, we got that easily. Thank you, Mr. Melzer.
Thank you. Nice job.
Good offer to the state to learn about the world of school business. All right, anything else, Laura?
Nope, that's it.
All right, moving on, community reports, curriculum, two.
This is, this is a trip that we did not bring forward to the committee. We just got the vacation work right after the last meeting, but this is the same annual Cafe Arrowhead trip, so we thought I'd bring it to the board for a little without discussing first of the committee.
Okay, move. Can we have a motion, a second, to approve the Special Education Department intellectual disabilities cafe Arrowhead trip to Disney World? Any questions on that?
Do we know how many kids have gone this year? Is it 16?
It was. I think 16 and 3.
It says total in group, I don't know if that's kids and.
Yeah, 16 and 3.
Yeah, the amount of students that go from the program is going to be lower than 16, so there's a total in group. It's John himself, I'm sorry, John, his wife, and Maggie Gunther, who was a former teacher here. And then they bring along some of their alumni to help kind of peer mentor the students through Disney World. So, the field trip is like a capstone for his program, where when they go there, then it's a complete kind of like immersion, life skills, independence piece that they're working up towards throughout the program. And if you know John and see him work with his kids, it's not an easygoing vacation for those kids. It's you guys need to go out, figure this out, here's where you need to be, get to, and you know, you're going to do a lot of this on your own.
But as I understand it, he does that, but, I mean, they do, but there's always somebody within, like, seeing them, but they have to, and they're navigating this alone, so that they're learning those skills, but some, they have a backup, you know, so they're never, it's just.
Never have a problem.
It's shows.
He just like disappears for four days and then they come back and you never hear anything. Some of the stories we've heard from the parents afterwards have been just tear jerking, coming from this side of the table.
Not that we ever do that.
Okay, your question. Hearing not all in favor state aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. Your next meeting is April 11.
That's tomorrow morning.
In the morning. So, come in 10 hours.
The Innovation Lab is in the new design engineering manufacturing center.
Oh, that one, okay.
So, if you just go right through the all-purpose room cafeteria.
But we come in here.
Sure, you can come here.
I just didn't know where we could call it.
Okay, moving on to finance and legislation, Greg.
Yeah, we had a meeting last week and we were looking at, looking at the probability of declining enrollment, anticipating a lower state capitalization number, and anticipating a higher tax levy, anticipating using some of the general fund for some one-time expenses. As Steve will tell you, there's a lot of variables still in play right now that not anybody knows about, or we know what variables are, we don't know what they're probably going to come down. So, Steve, would you give us the details, please?
All right. And you've all pretty much seen this presentation in the past, we're, we do have a budget put together and we really have a fairly good handle on our expenses, but we do not have a good handle on our revenues and that's, most of those larger revenues are determined by the state biennial budget, which currently is, you know, the governor has presented a budget, you know, hopefully by the end of June, there might be something in place, but there was a possibility to issue that there won't be anything in place by July 1st, but we shall see. But what I'd like to go over just tonight is really look at, you know, the student enrollment, you know, what we're projecting for the future, some revenues, expenses, and then give you an idea where we're at right now with the tax levy. When you look at projected student enrollment, we had back, I think in 2008, 2009, Arrowhead High School had a high enrollment of about over 2,300 kids. And right now, we are looking at for the current year, for 1819, we're at 2,133 kids. That's head count, so that includes all of our open enrollment students and resident students. And we are projecting next year for that enrollment to go to 2,008, which is a decrease of 44 students. If you look at how that breaks down in, by class, you can see the green bars represent 1920 and the freshman class coming in next year is 480 students and the senior class leaving is 518 students. So, you know, there's pretty much, you know, also the decline in enrollment right there. And then when you look projecting out into the future as, and we pretty much, we project forward using a spreadsheet and we cast forward all the different grade levels from kindergarten through eighth grade. And when we cast forward, obviously, these projections are more accurate the fewer years out, but as you can see, based on the enrollments at the K8s and in the parochial schools that feed in. But as you can see, based on the enrollments at the K eights, um, and in the parochial schools that feed in, it look, you know, we are looking at projected enrollment declines over the next six years, so. As we look at revenue, our two largest sources of revenue are state sources and, and local sources. Local sources include the property tax levy, student fees, interest income, things of that nature. Um, other sources include our open enrollment revenue, uh, insurance dividends, transfers, and things like that. So I'm gonna kind of hit on mostly the, the state budget stuff, cause really whatever we get from the state really depends on what our, our levy, tax levy becomes. And, and right now we are very, um, when you look at our, our budget from a revenue standpoint, it's very conservative. There are a number of state aids that really we, we don't have a really good handle on right now because of the fact that there's uncertainty at the state level. State equalization aid, we're projecting a fifteen percent drop in equalization aid, and that's the maximum drop that, that a school district can, uh, experience in one year. And reason, really, the reason behind that is our, our state equalized value per pupil is going up at a rate higher than the state average. Our equalized values are going up, you know, prob, you know, last year that equalized value went up two point six six percent. And when you couple that with a declining in enrollment, that means your state equalized value per pupil is probably going up over four percent. And the state average is probably in the twos or something like that. So essentially what, what that means, and when you look at equalization aid formula, it says, well, Arrowhead, you can tax more because you have more of a tax base. And, um, and then that causes our equalization aid to decline. Now, in past years, we've been pretty conservative with equalization aid. Do I think it's gonna end up at this level? I, I think it's gonna come up, come in at a level higher than this. But for budgetary, uh, planning and projections, um, you know, there are some scenarios that, that it does come in at this level, but, um, you know, you can see in the last couple of years, we projected, like last year, we projected a decline of ten percent. It came in, I think, a decline of one percent. So, um, and all the, these numbers will be certified in October. So before the levy is certified, this, this number will be, um, taken care of there. There's a number of proposals out there, um, that at, at the state level that increase state equalization aids. One is a, uh, in, in Governor Evers' budget is a guarantee of three thousand dollars per pupil in state equalization aid. Um, right now the guarantee is a thousand dollars per pupil. That would bump our state aid up by two point three million over the projected amount. Now, that, that, again, that's, that's, that's downline, it's probably a twenty-twenty-one, um, uh, budgetary, um, concern there, but essentially how they fund that, they would decrease their, the, right now there's a tax levy credit. It's a probably, I don't know how much that total pie is, but that money does not come, it's a tax levy credit, does not come to the school districts. It's, it, you, you can see on your property tax bills, there's a property tax levy credit on your, um, on your tax bill. And essentially what the governor's proposing is that money instead of going, be distributed through the municipalities or get distributed through, uh, the equalization aid formula. So whether or not that happens, another one would be that the maximum loss of state aid in one year would be ten percent rather than fifteen percent. And again, obviously that would be good for Arrowhead to the two of about two hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Uh, but again, some of that stuff may not come until the second year of the biennial budget, so. Um, but I think there's some things coming. Another, um, item that is, that, that is being discussed right now is state special education categorical aid. And we are projecting in the budget, uh, twenty-six percent reimbursement of teachers' salary of certified, uh, special aides and teachers receive categorical aid of twenty-six percent of their salaries and benefits. The, the proposal for, for next year is thirty percent. Um, so if that goes through, that would mean another eighty thousand dollars in, in special ed categorical aid revenue that would help offset, you know, the, the tax levy or the, or the use of fund balance that we're projecting. So there's, again, there's a lot of uncertainties built into this budget, but it's really the best information we have right now, um, on the revenue side. On the expense side, if you, um, this is a, obviously sixty-five percent of our budget is personnel, and we're very people-driven, and you could even add, uh, special ed when you look at that, that budget. Um, that ends up being a, a, a general fund expenditure through a transfer to Fund Twenty-Seven. Um, and that's, uh, about eighty-nine percent of that is personnel. So when you look at our budget, we're close to seventy percent, uh, personnel, and we're very, obviously we're a people business, and, and that's where a lot of our, most of our resources are going. Um, continuing budgets, you know, that includes, uh, departmental supplies, utilities, uh, transportation, things of that nature. Special ed would be the, uh, net special ed budget when you take the expenditures less all of our different categorical aids. Supplemental budget would be, uh, departmental equipment, textbooks, uh, uniforms, uh, team uniforms, buildings and grounds supplemental, and the capital expansion fund. Those are pretty much two in the same. Um, that's really the different projects that we, uh, budget for on an annual basis to enhance the facilities, whatever. So, um, and what this graph shows is kind of a depiction of what, what has happened over the last, you know, actually over the last nine years. You can see that the percent of the budget dedicated to, um, personnel has dropped over the last nine years, and it's really been offset really by the percent that we've dedicated to, uh, buildings and grounds and capital expansion, uh, budget. So, um, some pretty significant change in how we, uh, allocate our expenses over the years. Um, this, this graph represents our buildings and grounds and capital expansion budget, and these, both of these are within the revenue limit. We, between these two, we have about two million dollars in projects projected for next year. And that would, uh, we are projecting to use about one point four six nine million dollars in fund balance to help fund those projects, uh, for next year. Um, we have, you know, when, when we look at our, our buildings and grounds projects, we have, uh, what we call priority one and future priority one requests. Those are, you know, requests that really, um, if, if the funds were available, we would do them. Right now, like that total's about four point four million dollars. So, um, we've had, uh, a pair back on that project list. The capital expansion fund, this was started back in two thousand four, two thousand five. This is a levy, a separate levy at the meeting, and essentially what, we, we put money in there on an annual basis. Really, it's a lot, most of the times you put it in for roofing, because those projects, we, we budget for it in, and levy for it in nineteen, twenty, but the project usually doesn't happen until, um, next year in August, then we're into the, you know, twenty-twenty-one budget. We can carry this, these funds over from year to year in the capital expansion fund. So that's really a roofing project, um, roofing and/or building envelope. Um, the projects that we're looking at, um, projecting for nineteen, twenty, uh, we have some more roofing and building and envelope repairs in, in the buildings and grounds supplemental budget. HVAC lighting remodeling upgrades to the north campus woods room and the north campus fitness center. Um, the, uh, replace interior door hardware associated with the, uh, school safety grant. Uh, and we're keen on interior door hardware, a lot of, uh, sort of school safety type stuff. Um, the, uh, south campus art kiln room, you know, a lot of these projects are, are associated with safety and, and kind of like the HVAC is really remodeling and doing HVAC work and replacing HVAC units that are probably the oldest, um, at North Campus. Uh, the art room kiln is a, um, that would replace a gas kiln with an electric, an electric kiln, which was, um, part of our, you know, the, um, safety, um, situation as well. And then, uh, the site safety expenses associated with the pedestrian path fencing and concrete pad near the new visitor site bleachers and installation of new visitor site outdoor bleachers. Those two projects, uh, would be funded with the bottom, the bottom there with fund balance, as would the HVAC lighting and remodeling, and we would use about, uh, and, uh, some of the interior, uh, door hardware and things like that would be funded with fund balances as well, so. Uh, as you look at those, those projects, those are the ones that, uh, came, uh, to the top of the list. And a lot of them, obviously, when you look at them, it, it involves, uh, site safety upgrades and, uh, uh, some things that can be, uh, taken care of for safety purposes. Um, when you look at our personnel budget, personnel budget is projected to be about seventeen point nine million dollars. And this is a, a breakdown of the different, uh, job categories between teachers, administration, what percent, uh, that those job categories make up of the personnel budget. Um, the next one, I, this is one that's kind of hard to read, but, um, if you read on your computer, I think you can get it. But what we've done over the last, uh, eight years have, we've made pretty many changes to our, uh, benefit structure, um, and essentially these are carrier changes, plan design changes, um, you know, implementation of a health reimbursement arrangement, things like that, that, that really if we would not have made these changes, uh, these changes caused us to avoid about two point four million dollars in costs. And if we wouldn't have made these changes, our, you know, we, obviously we would not have been able to incur these expenses because of the revenue limit. The revenue limit would not allow us to, uh, continue with the health benefits that we had and the dental benefits and things like that that we had back in, uh, two thousand ten, eleven. Um, this next slide kind of shows you where, when you look at the increase of, uh, two hundred and twenty-six thousand dollars in expenditures between the capital expansion fund and the, uh, district, uh, general fund. Majority, obviously, this, this slide pretty much looks very similar every year. Majority of the increases are in the personnel side of things. Uh, that's where in seventy, sixty-five to seventy percent of our budget is in personnel. Um, and this, uh, you know, allows us to provide, you know, some salary increases for, for staff. Um, um, some of the benefit we are, benefits are pretty much, um, maintaining pretty close to status quo. We've made some changes to our, uh, dental insurance, uh, plan, but, uh, we made a big change to our health insurance plan last year, switching to United Healthcare, and we're gonna, uh, continue with United Healthcare for, uh, for the next year. Um, this chart kind of gives you an idea of what our, uh, comparison of general fund expenditures and the capital expansion fund, um, levy over the last, um, uh, eight, nine years. And you can see that, um, I think over the, the last, uh, nine years, our budget has gone about ten percent, which is an average of little over one percent a year. Uh, when you look at the increases over, over the, uh, since, uh, two thousand ten, eleven. Um, district fund balance is, as you know, uh, this budget is projecting the use of, uh, uh, one point four six nine million in general fund balance. Uh, the, we're projecting the general fund balance to be at eight point four million dollars on June thirtieth. Um, so, um, which ends up being probably around about thirty-one point four percent of our operating budget, which is, you know, I, you know, the, the question is always asked, what's an adequate fund balance? Thirty-one point four percent is a, is a healthy fund balance. There's, there's no doubt about it. Um, uh, and when we look at, you know, other districts, we're kind of in the middle. You know, some are, you know, close to zero percent, some are eighty percent of, of operating, uh, budget as far as fund balance. We're, we're kind of in the middle. We're not, uh, you know, the fund balance is healthy. Um, obviously, uh, using it for one-time projects like we would use is, that, that one point four nine million is, is all buildings and grounds projects. It's not, uh, recurring operating expenses. We're using it for one-time projects in order to, to, to get some of those projects completed, um, that need to be completed. Uh, this next, uh, represents the, the, uh, the, the school district tax. The tax levy that projecting to go up two point eight eight percent. That total is about five hundred thirty-three thousand dollars. So when I, went back, a few slides back, we had a loss of, uh, we projected a loss of about seven hundred thousand in state equalization aid. Whatever money that we get in above that fifteen percent would be a direct offset to the tax levy. So let's say if, if we, the loss is only two hundred thousand dollars, so then our tax levy is, you know, maybe a thirty-three thousand dollar increase, you know, that, that's just kind of a hypothetical. But any increase in state aid over what we project is a direct offset to the tax levy. So again, that, that number will not be certified until, um, till next October. Um, the next chart, this kind of, this is our, um, kind of the, the two largest revenues, and it kind of tracks, you know, our tax levy versus, uh, state equalization aid. Um, and, and there is a correlation, it's not a direct correlation, but essentially the, um, over the years that are, that is represented in this graph, the tax levy has gone up by one hundred ninety-one thousand dollars. That, that's the difference between the nineteen, twenty levy and the twelve, thirteen levy. And over that same period of time, state aid has gone down three hundred eighty-six thousand dollars. So not a direct correlation, but definitely when you look at state aid dropping, the way the revenue limit is formulated, levies tend to increase. Um, and this, this kind of gives you an idea of the different, uh, how our levy would be distributed between the general fund and long-term debt service fund. Uh, and, and again, long-term debt, nineteen, twenty, that is the final year of principal and interest on the debt associated with, excuse me, the nineteen ninety-nine referendum. So, uh, that levy will be at one point seven million in nineteen, twenty, and then in twenty-twenty-one, unless, unless there's, it's replaced with something, that would, that levy would go up by one point seven million dollars. So the, uh, the non-referendum debt service, um, represents the state trust fund loan associated with the south campus design engineering manufacturing, and this would be the fifth year of a ten-year, uh, borrowing, you know. This chart gives you an idea of our mill rate. Um, we're looking at a three cent increase in the mill rate. That's associated, it's a combination of the, the two point eight eight percent increase in the tax levy. We're projecting a two percent increase in equalized value. So the, the, the mill rate equals a tax levy divided by the equalized value times one thousand. So that's going up by about one percent.
Say that again three times.
Yeah. Um, this, this chart kind of gives you an idea of the Arrowhead taxes and we, this, this is about a two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollar house, uh, on, based on the three dollar and ten cent mill rate, that, that house would pay eight hundred and forty-five dollars in property taxes to Arrowhead. Now, obviously, Arrowhead's not the only taxing district on your tax builders. There's a K eight, municipalities, Waukesha County, uh, WCTC, so, um, and, and this, this is actually a decrease, um, or a little, little increase from last year, but we look back over the years, um, when it, when that house get, you know, that, that house kind of in that scenario gets adjusted for inflation, um, the taxes are actually less than, than they were in, uh, two thousand eleven. Um, this, just some comparables with, uh, this is the comparative total education cost. These numbers are taken from the DPI website, and, uh, this, this include all, includes all costs except food service and community service. It includes general fund, special projects fund, capital expansion fund, and debt service. That's pretty much all, you know, all of our relevant expenditures. And as you can see, Arrowhead's, uh, cost per pupil of comparable union high school districts. There's ten of the union high school districts in the state. Uh, we're the ninth, uh, we're second from the bottom as far as low cost. So our, um, you know, it goes from a high of nineteen thousand one hundred and sixty-three dollars per student to a low of twelve thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars per student, so. And when you look at mill rate, we're kind of in the same, same boat, um, in the second lowest, lowest mill rate of, um, of all the union high school districts in the state. So that, that's pretty much it, and as. And as, you know, we, we've spent a lot of time going over, you know, from a, from a staff standpoint, from, we had reviewed this budget with finance committee last week. A lot of time has gone into, by a lot of people, is developing this budget. And again, obviously, you know, the big uncertainty, the state biennial, biennial budget, you know, I think, we'll all be kind of reading about that over the next couple of months. The, you know, we, we base it on a September membership count projection. Again, that's not going to be solid until the 3rd Friday in September. State aid, we talked about, that will be certified until October. And the equalized, the portion of that equalized value, we won't know that. We're projecting a 2% increase. That's gone up over 3% over the last probably three, four years in a row. So, a lot of uncertainties, but obviously, we need a budget. We, we start the fiscal year on July 1st, and we need to, you know, start planning and moving along. And, and again, the budget process is kind of like, you know, a year-long process. We start in November, and then we certify the levy at the end of October. And really, the reason behind that is because we're on a fiscal year basis, and we levy on a calendar year basis. So, that, the levy for the 1920 school year won't be distributed, and the tax bills associated with that won't go out until December of 2019. So, that's kind of why we're in this perpetual cycle of budgeting, so. It never ends. And a majority of our revenue, our tax revenue, you know, we, we go through more than half of our fiscal year before we generate any tax levy revenue, which, as you, it's the largest source of revenue that we have. So, we need, we use fund balance to help with our cash flow shortages. We do short-term borrowing and things like that, so.
You're going to miss this.
Yeah.
You're going to miss this.
Oh, yeah.
It's got a perpetual budget for you or anyone else.
Good job, Craig.
And with that, obviously, we're, you know, we're, you know, in order for us to, to, you know, get going on projects and things like that, you know, obviously, as far as approving a preliminary budget, knowing it's very preliminary, you know, then we'll present it at the annual meeting in August, and then certify the levy in October. Real present.
He'll be in the audience.
He'll be in here, we're talking about the new marketing plan.
Okay, so we have an action item to approve the 2019-2020 preliminary budget.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions, either Steve, or Craig, or Laura, on any of this?
I'd make a comment on the, so when we're, in looking at this, when we're making a decision to approve the annual budget, it's easy to just think of it as kind of a mundane thing, and we do it every year. We don't have to focus all that hard on it. But when we're dipping into the general fund to the tune of $1.5 million, that was just slightly over an $8 million fund, it's a, I mean, we're making a policy decision that is not sustainable long-term. And it's not that I disagree with it, but it's a big deal. And I, I think the best statistics that sort of enlighten the need for this kind of decision is the chart that shows the difference in personnel costs versus building and grounds costs, going back to, comparing 2010-11 to the upcoming 2019-20. In 2010-11, we had just about 75% of our budget was dedicated to personnel costs, and in 2019-20, we're going to be at about 65% of our budget dedicated to personnel costs. And, and I think we all agree that personnel is sort of the heart and soul of our operations, why we have budgets in the first place. And the fact that we've been able to adjust priorities and benefits and compensation in ways that has reduced that overall segment of our budget from 75% to 65%, well, I think, still providing a great product. And at the same time, squeezing upward, you know, the building and grounds supplemental and some of the other related stuff by almost 300% over that period of time, shows that we've probably squeezed our budget as far as we can to maintain our facility. I sure don't think we can take anything more out of personnel. And yet, we know, when we sit here today and we say, great, $1.5 million out of our $8 million kitty, that works good for a year, but unless you're all going to join Steve, we've got a few more years to think about. So, I, I feel the need to point out that bad situation, that unsustainable spending, because this decision gets a lot harder in a year, or two years, or three years, certainly. That $8 million is going to be down to $6.5 million next year, and, you know, from there on, so.
We have all three districts that are...
So, I, I say this just sort of shouting at the wind and shaking my fist at nobody in particular, that I, I intend to vote yes with great consternation.
Okay. They have motion second.
Yeah, you're absolutely right with that. Part of that, we reduced personnel expenses, but it's part of that deduction on personnel, but we've also increased maintenance costs, which has also helped the personnel expenditure from a per se standpoint decrease because of building grounds. Part of the difference is, in 2010-11, we didn't have as many old air conditioners and heating units and that kind of stuff, we didn't have as many aging facilities that are eating more and more funds. And you're right, it's not sustainable. So, at some point, we're going to have to do something to find a better way of funding the building and grounds and the maintenance and facility projects that we have coming up. I mean, we're spending over $1 million a year on moving ground. You know, we should be spending quite a bit more than that, and we just don't have it. And consequently, where we are taking it from is from fund balance. That's, you're right, it's not sustainable. Start with us real quick here. So, Steve's going to, Steve's going to leave us a lot of money, but he leaves, I guess.
We're seeing that sound large.
No, he will leave us a large. But, yeah, you're right.
All in favor of state, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? motion carries. Thank you, Steve, for all your work on that, right? Your committee. See where it goes. Next is building grounds. Cast.
Well, kind of like Craig, my building grounds, it was pretty much going to come to the last portion here of the budget. Thank you, Steve. Any questions? It's pretty much the same idea we had last month, with some tweaking to it, but as Steve pointed, I mean, as he'll point it out, you know, we're looking at spending almost a million and a half in fund balance to help, a good portion of that is building grounds projects, so.
Next meeting is major.
Yep.
All right, okay. And personnel, we did have a meeting on March 20th. A couple of different things we talked about. Majority of the time was spent on, this was the annual review of employee handbook, all 187 pages, so I'll start with page one. Most of the changes were basically either updating dates, or things that Bob, Bob Butler suggested to Steve, should, that should be put in there because of different changes at the state level or whatever. So, there is nothing really significantly different than how we're operating now. Steve, I don't know if there was anything on this particular point or that, but to get a chance to read it, most of the stuff is cosmetic changes, so.
I'm taking motion to accept the changes to the 2019-2020 employee handbook.
Second. Motion second. Any questions on that? Are you in all in favor of state, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then, as Steve had just presented, as far as the personnel budget, there, there's an indication that we are projecting a 2% increase across the board for all of our staff. CPI is at 2.44%, so we're, we're underneath that. And then, yeah, as you can see in the minutes, there's just a couple of other things that are listed as potential savings or increases depending on the insurance, I think, is basically dental health insurance. So, I think we're just projecting kind of the worst case scenarios, and hopefully, they get a little bit better as time goes with that, so. And our next meeting is on May 1st, where we have a committee for the Arrowhead Teacher of the Year and the...
May 1st is the afternoon meeting for bargaining?
Broad one. So, May 1st is our annual negotiation with the staff, salary, base salary, base wages. Then we have another one later in the...
What day is that?
May 17th.
Seventeenth.
It's May 17th, Friday.
Yeah.
Right, so Friday and May 17th at 7:00 a.m. is the personnel committee meeting for the Arrowhead Award and Teacher of the Year award determinations.
So, there's still time for, you know, nominations for the Arrowhead Awards. There's still time to submit those to Diane, or to Laura primarily, but Diane has the forms if she needs to get sent out, so. All right, moving on to policy now.
If you look at the minutes that Laura did, one of the things that we need to discuss, policy 686, that's a new one, proposed by Wasby and Earl and one of the sheriff's that Laura connected with. We had a discussion on it, it's not up for approval, but we did have a discussion that lasted a long time. We're going to have a meeting next Thursday morning, and if the whole board could come, that would be great, because due to Bob's experience in law enforcement and Tim's experience in law, this is touchy. It's really a, it's, it's, it's a, if you've all read the policy, you'll understand what we're talking about. Tim brought up the point that, like, just say vaping, is that something that we need to involve the police in? And it's something that we all need to think about, because it happens a lot here. And there's different scenarios that go along with both of those. So, I would really like to have everybody's opinion. We can't do it right here, but if you could all come to the meeting next Thursday, then maybe we can discuss this.
So, that's, you're calling it a personnel meeting in here, but it's really a policy meeting?
Did I call it personnel?
No, it's policy.
It's a policy.
Well, I know, but in these, in these minutes...
Did I call it personnel?
No, but if you look at the policy minutes from Friday, March 22nd, it's calling it a personnel meeting on April 18th at 7:00 a.m. It's really a policy meeting.
It is a policy.
Oh, that's my, that's my...
Sorry.
I mean, I'm not trying to point, I'm, I'm, I'm not trying to tell somebody they were wrong, but it, it was misleading at first, and I'm figuring it out now, but I was...
But I would really like to have everybody's opinion on this and how they feel about it. We are also going to have, I think Greg is going to be there along with Dab and Becky, so that we can have kind of what's, what's going on already, so that we can make a better decision as to how we should approach this policy. So, I don't know if you have anything to add to that.
No, I'd say that we reviewed the proposed policy, which is based on six or seven other school districts' related policies about police access to students during the school day. But questions arose, at what point should police involvement occur, and what, what are typical school discipline practices? I didn't have the answers to all of the questions that came up, and so we wanted to continue the discussion with Greg and Deb and Becky present, due to the day-to-day discipline management.
Now, did some of this go back to what Bob Butler came and talked to Richmond, where he had a whole handout on when police get involved and what they can and can't do, and you've got that.
We use the WASV sources.
Okay, okay.
But this arose from an incident that happened about six weeks ago or so, and so it just kind of refreshed the idea, but we just need, we need parameters.
Okay.
And with having staff here, we could maybe come to some better decisions on this.
And just to put it in context, I agree, it would be wonderful if as many of us as possible could get in there. Conversation started out with, what happens when the police contact doesn't want to come in and interview one of our students, and went to, well, at what point do we think it's necessary, advisable or inadvisable, to invite law enforcement, and depending on student conduct, you know, what's, you know, standard, you know, teaching and administration and dealing with naughty kids versus something that requires law enforcement participation? And Bob and I come at this from two entirely different perspectives, so it makes for a difficult discussion, and so let's have that on Thursday.
Well, and even in our latest school, there was a thing about restorative practices and how you feel about it, so. If we could go through those, that'd be great. Moving on, some of the changes that we made, policy 621, right back in 15, we added, I think, Anacca's for foreign exchange students. They have no longer sent anybody, along with a couple of the other groups. So, what we've done is we tweaked that a little bit, so that we can allow other new groups to come in. I believe we only have two students right now for foreign exchange, so that we can have new ones come in, and it will be under the superintendent's discretion, although following the rules of the U.S. Department of State and the current certifications that are necessary.
Do you want them individually?
Yeah. So, if do, in a kind of motion to approve the revisions to policy 621 for the exchange students.
So...
Second. Motion second. Any questions on that? You're now in favor of state, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
New policy procedures, 1033 online solicitations and crowdfunding, basically just explains the policy and procedure on how to do that and how all the funds have to stay within the school.
Motion to approve that.
Second.
Motion second to approve the new policy, 1033. All in favor of state, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Revising policy 222, it's just kind of twerking the names. Instead of business manager, it's director of business services, and also instead adding the whole policy committee of personnel, I have a personnel committee, a personnel committee designated to help in that selection.
Move to accept the revised policy, 222.
Second. Motion second. All in favor of state, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Revising policy 718, the seventh mandatory recording. It clarifies the language for child abuse and neglect, but then there's a whole other paragraph now that we have school safety involved as well.
I'll also make that motion, receiver 718.7.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor of state, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Very nice work.
And then, yeah, it took a while. Thanks to Laura who did all the work. And then the next meeting would be on April 18th, and if you can all be here then, Craig.
Thank you. Other reports, nothing reported for WASV other than at the May meeting, as we delegate an ultimate to the next year's convention.
I hate to give it up, but I like to give it up.
Decide that next month.
Next month.
I dare you to skip.
Okay, moving on to...
Yeah, yeah, there's nothing to report.
Okay. All right. Moving on to new business, we have no resignations, retirements, we do have some contracts. It looks like there's no new positions on there that are in your package.
Move to accept the contracts and letters of appointment as presented.
Second. Motion second. Any questions on those? Are you in all in favor of state, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The next one is discussion action to issue a preliminary staff contract, non-renewal notice, page one, listed in your package. Second. Motion second. Any questions on that?
I just have a question. You know, we, we sit here and talk about having a PR person. Could we maybe take one of these people that are going down, and, you know, I mean, she's three twelfths. Can we maybe give her four twelfths and have her do PR? I mean, would that be a possibility, or no?
Meditarily.
Not necessarily, but...
No, I mean, in terms of the budget, we're trying to find ways to reduce.
Oh, okay.
Keeping Ethan won't work.
Probably depend on their skill set, too, just, is this person is the one?
I'm not sure about her, but I mean, I don't know if we have any others that are in the same boat, that might be appropriate.
Okay, so we have a motion second to approve that. All in favor of state aid?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have no gifts. Next action, in the selection of school board members to participate in the Arrowhead High School commencement ceremony on June eighth or ninth. And, we have four members on the stage, but obviously, all members are certainly invited to attend, and there's a spot for you not on the stage to sit right in front of the stage, so. Who would like, we have any graduates this year?
I have some. Yeah, I'd like to.
Amy's up there.
I have some, if nobody else wants to go up on the floor.
I always want to go up, so.
I'm like Sue on that, I, I do any type. But I've been last two years, so I have nothing left for...
I think too.
And I've been up there a lot, too, so anybody else?
Yeah.
How about we do Sue, Tim, Dave, and anybody else can sit?
Do you have Amy?
Yeah, I got Amy.
Okay.
So, you have Amy, Sue, Tim, and Dave. Okay, everybody all good with that? Any motion on this?
So, I've told the umbrella, didn't I, this year?
Yep.
You got a whole mind?
Know about, you know, Greg ordered sunshine.
I sacrificed it last year because my daughter's graduating this year. I have to take priorities here.
Okay, so you got those, Diane?
Yep.
All right, in the future, Judd, I was...
Just a couple of notes, lobster boil's coming up.
Take it there, here.
Play, have to see that.
Play looks good. Did everybody get that email from Berman?
Yeah.
Had an opportunity this evening to attend a leadership with Coach Ralph, who, discussion with six of us and was very impressed with the attitude and the presentation of the leadership, capabilities of him and other leaders in the school.
As a reminder, it's not too late. April twenty-seventh is the Hall of Fame Dinner at the Seven Seas, starts at five PM. If you're, if you want to come, there's information on the website. We have eight inductees this year. There's a great MC.
But, you know, if you haven't been, it's really, you hear some great...
Yeah, there's stories.
You know, your husband's...
I think my husband gave the best speech.
Donna, I was just going to say that, he, I mean, he...
You want to see it, I got it on...
But, it's just such an up, up evening, and you just hear old stories, new stories, and, and everybody there just is so great to be there.
And it's nice because there are a lot of our inductees from the past come back here after a year to see the kids that they coached or whatever, or whether classmates or whatever, and it's, it's just a very, very positive upbeat event.
You can't help but be feeling so good.
Yeah.
Just do...
And, and all these people that go in, they're so appreciative of their time here and things that they, they bring out stories that you've never heard before, and some are, you think are made up.
But like, what, what's going to be, like, one of the basketball, when it's one of the girls' basketball members from, they'll have like the whole team there, you know, that they come back for, and they're all in the, I mean, it's just really neat.
Speaking of super positive and negatives, don't forget about math night tomorrow night from six thirty to eight. Got to get that. Positives and negatives, you got it.
Needle's there.
Yeah.
All right. And a kind of motion to...
Second.
Motion second, all in favor of state aid?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, everybody. Thanks, Bob.